I'd like to call the regular session meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Romanek.
Here.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Here.
Commissioner Sui.
Here.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Casabun.
Here.
May I please have... do we have pastor in the house? No pastor?
No.
Sir, can you please just join us and please, can we, public, can we please stand for an invocation filed by the salute flag?
Let's pray. Creator God, we are just blessed to be here in your presence tonight. I thank you for a group of leaders that starts a meeting in prayer. Father, we call on you for your wisdom. We call on you for your guidance. We thank you for who you are and we pray your anointing over these leaders and over this time be in the conversations, be in the decisions that are made. For we ask that your glory be shown in this city of Millville, in Cumberland County, and in this great state. We ask it all in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being conducted in accordance with the Oakland Public Meetings Act of 1975, was advertised, posted, and made available to the public as required by statute. The municipal clerk is directed to include a statement in the minutes of this meeting. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor. We have an ordinance amending Millville Code Chapter 30, Land Use and Development Regulations to rezone Block 290, Lot 1, to HC Highway Commercial District as recommended in the 2025 Land Use Element of the Master Plan, and resolution to award a non-fair and open contract Reliable Power Plus LLC.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Public comment on agenda items only. If anybody from the public would like to comment on agenda items, please come to the podium, state your name, address your concerns, and please limit your concerns to approximately five minutes. Mr. Aronoff.
Just five minutes? My name's Ethan Aronoff. I live on East Main Street and have for a long time, as some people know. I'm here in support of the International Short Film Festival, which I've seen most of them for the three years that they've occurred. And it's a truly an educational experience. I'm a former educator, so I can appreciate that. But there's just these tremendous films. And last year, get my notes right, there were 132 submissions from 31 countries, and they ended up showing 58 of them. And they were tremendous. And they come from all over the world, and they cover almost every conceivable subject you can think of. And that's the very interesting part. Each one, even though it might not be a subject you like, can be appreciated for the artistic creativity that went into it. The scripts and the posing. I'm not a movie expert, but I know what I like when I see it. And most of the films were terrific in that you would learn something. It might not be very helpful information. Some of it is purely entertainment, and that's good, too. A lot of comedies, a lot of documentary-type films. And they, they run the gamut from about one minute, I think one was one minute, to 20 minutes. So you, you can sit through a lot of these, and I did. I sat through all of them last, last time. Because I get something out of it, and I think the people in Millville will get something out of it. And we're looking for your support if you can do that. It's a terrific thing. Mr. Horn has worked very hard on this. And I think it's an honor that we have it in Millville. And so I hope you'll support it.
Thank you, Mr. Aronoff.
Hi, Diane Rogers in, from the Riverfront Renaissance Center for the Arts at the moment. Just the same thing, supporting the, the film festival sponsorship from the city and how important it is to our, our nice city of Millville here. It is the fourth year, which is great. So we've had a real good foundation to build that film festival on. It's very professionally done, very enjoyable. And with the short films, they're grouped in sections, so you can come and go and see some, take some time in between. And that leads me to why it's beneficial, too. We, it also is the Friday, the 19th of September, and Saturday, the 20th. That 19th is also our third Friday event downtown where we all participate in that. So people coming in for the film festival from different places will be around. Same thing for Saturday. We are open on Saturday, so are other vendors and places like the DC Gallery, the Village on High, Colonial Flowers, and the restaurants. So they put together a beautiful map that goes with the film festival agenda, or film list, and that helps everyone find things they can go do in between. We tried to offer a few extra things at our facility because of the film festival being in town. So it's really worth supporting, and I hope the city is one of the big sponsors. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers.
John Worthington, Millville. I'm here to speak briefly on Resolution 18.8. I want to applaud the city and the resolution to seek NJDEP funding for a study to bring public water to Laurel Lake section of the city, where everyone, of course, relies on wells. I also want to encourage you to continue to seek state funding to extend sewer service to the area, which is our biggest problem. The size of the lots make it difficult for septic systems there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Worthington.
Hello, everyone. My name is Marcus Graves. I am here to speak in regards to the Cut International Film Festival. I am a filmmaker, and my film screened at Cut International Film Festival in September last year. After 10 years of being a filmmaker, it was actually my first time ever seeing one of my films in a theater setting, and that was a fantastic experience. I, I want to speak with you tonight briefly regarding Cut International, what they're about, and what they cultivate for the local community, but also the filmmaking community at large. They cultivate architects, mathematicians, scientists, biologists, historians, and mythologists. I see some of you looking at me. I'm kind of weird. Like, how do they do that? Because we, as filmmakers, construct and design stories. No, not in height, but in laying foundations to a premise and an idea, building upon those foundations, making sure that it has function, meaning, so that a story, a beginning, middle, and end can be told. We crunch numbers, conducting business in the construction of these stories, managing resources, personnel, production logistics. Also that everything seen on screen is precisely what is needed to tell the story. We observe the world like a scientist, how it works, how people operate within it, so that we can either recreate that world or create entirely new ones that could never, ever otherwise exist. We tell the tales of impactful and influential people and/or events. As a painter paints on a canvas, we paint on our canvas, that being a large silver screen. And on this screen, on this wall, we create moving and auditory hieroglyphics, as those you would see in Greek and Egyptian artifacts. Yes, the great museums are filled with artifacts or artwork that was done by filmmakers before film existed. They were known then as what we still are known as now: storytellers. Storytellers that would express and recount the historical life of a pharaoh, or create their own world when telling of Zeus and the pantheon of Mount Olympus. The only difference, we now use theater screens such as the LaVoy Theater, as opposed to clay. We are also one other thing, and that is magicians. We can take the imagination and through construction, through engineering and math, through observation, we can take it and make it real. Without film, you would never see that a superman could fly. Because of film, we can know what happened a long time ago in a galaxy far, far away during a war amongst the stars. And because of film, a multi-billion dollar company can be established on the foundation of four words: I am Iron Man. That is what Cut International Film Festival is about. It is about cultivating and showcasing the stories built by architects, the logistics of mathematicians observing data about our world, or presenting the discovery of a new one. Cut International is about what history has been about: storytellers. I will leave you with this final thought. Remember back to five years ago. Remember back to when everyone was shut in. Remember back to when teachers, engineers, governmental officials, the whole world was on lockdown. Remember that when the whole world stopped, everyone had two things as the world held its breath: family and film. Remember that Cut Film Festival doesn't just host an event. They prize, cultivate, and build up the storytellers needed when the world stops. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, Commissioners. Eric Nyman, Wildflower. I also would like to speak in favor of the Cut International Film Festival. The downtown benefits greatly from the business it brings in. And as the gentleman who just spoke mentioned, you never know what's going to happen with film and the media and, you know, we might get some young filmmakers who fall in love with this city and want to contribute to it. So five grand that comes back to the local economy from the hotels and restaurants here. It's a safe investment. You're invested in the future. My business benefits from it, and all the money that comes from my business goes right back into the local economy, as many other local businesses do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Seeing no one else, I will close. Public comment on agenda items only. Presentations?
There are none, Mayor.
Bills, please.
Make a motion and pay the bills.
Second motion.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes. Petitions and letters, please.
Need a motion to receive and file a letter from Atlantic City Electric regarding vegetation management activities.
Make a motion?
Second motion.
Motion in second on petition and letters, item number one. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes. Reports of Commissioners. Commissioner Hewitt, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I want to start letting people know, by letting people know that, as everybody should remember, we lost some fire trucks recently. Engine 30 is being re-equipped right now in our firehouse, and it will be, should be back in service tonight, maybe tomorrow at the latest. Had another pretty big fire. Nobody was hurt, personnel or residents. I need to give a big shout out again. First off to Millville Fire Department, Millville Police Department, Millville Rescue Squad. Coverage, as you all know, and anybody out there watching knows, we need help. Vineland, Rosenhain, and Downtown Ship, along with Cedarville, were on scene at the fire with us. Vineland, another station in Vineland, sent a unit, along with Port Norris and Ghoul Town, to stand by and protect the city in case we had anything else go off, along with Cedarville. Millville OEM, big shout out, as had Millville PD. We had to call New Jersey Forest Fire in because there was fire along railroad tracks. Atlantic City Electric, South Jersey Gas, and I'd be remiss if I did not mention our county. Most people don't know we have a county fire police team. We didn't even have personnel on shift last night to block the area of the fire for all of the Facebook commentators that wanted to go live and drive down into the fire scene. So, big shout out to everybody. Once again, big shout out to Millville Public Safety Team. That's about it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hewitt, and thank you to all that Commissioner Hewitt said that helped the city out last night during that intense blaze that happened. Commissioner Sui?
All right. On June 5th, we had our annual Philly Home Run Derby, and the winners were as follows. Girls, 7 to 8. First place was Isabel Adams. Second place was Ryland Tobolski. Third place, Abigail Godfrey. Girls, 9 to 10. First place, Emma Sala. Second place, Elena Fichera. Third place, Isabella Thompson. Girls, 11 to 12. First place, Lucy Priestley. Second place, Aubrey String. Third place, Elena Kinsland. Boys, first place, Quince Hart, 7, 8-year-olds. Second place, Colton Bruno. Third place, Dawson Shelton. Boys, 9 to 10. First place, Chase Ripper. Second place, Kalib Montanez. Third place, Frankie Rivera. And boys, 11 to 12. First place, Noah Rodriguez. Second place, Nathan Shelton. Third place, Cameron Potts. Some more up and cupping, hopefully a professional baseball player in there somewhere. On June 7th, we had our annual fishing tournament, and the winners were as follows. Ages 5 to 9, biggest fish, Timmy Wade Wills. Age 5 to 9, most fish, Max Wade Wills. Ages 10 to 14, biggest fish, Louis Rodriguez. Ages 10 to 14, most fish, Mike Wade Wills. Ages 15 to 18, biggest and most fish, James Harris. And we thank, huge thank you to Big Days Tackles for donating the worms, and congratulations to winner of all the events. Between yesterday and today, the men of the Parks Department have been cleaning up abandoned homeless encampments. I'm going to spare you the details because they're pretty gross, but the areas are pretty undesirable, very undesirable. So I want to thank these guys for cleaning those areas up. I had the opportunity to walk through the other day, yesterday, actually, and it was messy. Our next event coming up is Fourth Friday on June 27th, 5 to 8 at Buck Park. Hope everyone comes out and enjoys this for some family fun in the park. Then the following week, come and join us for a Fourth of July celebration at Union Lake Park. Music will start at 6, and the fireworks will take place at 9. There will be food and vendors for everyone's enjoyment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Sui. Commissioner Casabun?
All right. Streets and Roads Department have a couple of projects that they're working on, along with the City Engineering Department. A storm drainage problem issue that we've had, and there's a couple of road improvements that we're working on. That's about it. They've just been busy, busy.
Thank you, Commissioner Casabun. Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes. Hold on one sec. First, I want to make a motion to receive and file the Tax Collector's Report for May of 2025.
Second motion.
Motion in second under receiving file the Tax Collector's Report for the month of May of this year. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
On tonight's agenda, the Council 18 MOA. Just want to thank Mr. Blaney, our Business Administrator, our Human Resources, and also our Council 18 and their representatives. It's been a long negotiation, but I'm glad to see it on tonight's agenda. This Thursday, we're going to be meeting with the SOA representatives to further discuss their contract. Here's some good news. The, I want to congratulate Michelle Nothaff. She just received her engineering license. So she's a professional engineer, Michelle. Congratulations. For the wastewater treatment upgrade, site work is expected to start in July. For the de-watering project that keeps getting brought up, we received proposals from ACOM to complete the necessary design engineering to take the drawings from 90 to 100%. This proposal was recently received, and it is under review. For the forced main project on Island Avenue, crews are installing forced main during the week and then installing temporary paving at the end of each week. Project has been running smoothly up to Race Street, as opposed to construction in narrow alleys originally planned for the project. Forced main work will end at the terminal manhole in Fulton, where transitioned to gravity 18-inch PVC. Garrison has completed all water main and services for the project for Woodland. Yep, Woodland Avenue. One hydrant needs to be removed at South Ace Street, and a line needs to be cut and capped. Paving restoration is required for the project. And I think that's all I had highlighted, just to be sure. That's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Watson. Zoning Board of Adjustments will take place at 6:00 PM on July 2nd, which is a Wednesday. Please take note of that. Planning Board will then take place on July 14th at 6:30 PM here at the Commission Chambers. First draft of the 2025 to 2029 Five-Year Consolidated Plan and 2025 Annual Plan for the Community Development Block Grant and Home, H-O-M-E, Investment Partnership Act, is available for public review through July 2nd, sorry, excuse me, through July 12th. Copies of the draft plan are currently located in the Community Development Office at City Hall. The draft plan is also on the city website on the Housing and Community Development page. A public hearing on the draft plan will be held on Thursday, June 26th at 4:30 PM in the City Commission Chambers at City Hall. Citizens are invited to submit written or verbal comments at or prior to the hearing. All interested individuals and organizations are invited to be encouraged to attend the public hearing. New housing inspector began work on Monday, June 16th. Today, I attended the State Development and Redevelopment Plan. It's not news to many of you, but Southern New Jersey is underutilized and underlooked. I didn't have many questions from this two-hour-long meeting today in New Brunswick, New Jersey. I had many concerns. Why? How? What? You can ask me personally on my personal feelings on this, but out of that, I just was discouraged on most that we do not have certain relationships set in place for South Jersey in general, but for the city of Millville and for Cumberland County to be utilized the best throughout the state of New Jersey. Ordinances in the second reading.
Ordinance for second reading, item number one, an ordinance approving and authorizing an application to the Cumberland County Roadway Department for Millville Girl Softball League to hold a coin drop on July 19th and 20th, 2025, at the intersections of Buck Shootum Road and Cedarville Road.
Make motion?
Second.
Motion in the second on ordinance in the second reading, item number one. There's a public hearing on this. If anybody from the public would like to comment on this ordinance for a second reading, please come to the podium. Seeing no one, I will close public hearing. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Ordinance for second reading, item number two, an ordinance approving and authorizing an application to the Cumberland County Roadway Department for Holly City Youth Football to hold a coin drop on July 26th, 26th, and 27th, 25th, at the intersections of Buck Shootum Road and Cedarville Road.
Make motion?
Second.
Motion in the second on ordinance for the second reading, item number two. I will open up public hearing for this. If anybody from the public would like to comment on this ordinance in the second reading, don't feel, feel free to run. Seeing that, I will close public hearing. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Ordinance for second reading, item number three, an ordinance accepting the dedication of certain streets located in Laurel Lake.
Make motion?
Second motion.
We have motion in the second for the ordinance in the second reading, item number three. I will now open up public hearing. If anybody from the public would like to come and comment, please state your name, address your comments, and please limit them to approximately five minutes. Mr. Worthington.
Hi, my name's John Worthington in Millville. I'm also Secretary of Laurel Lake Property Owners Association. I just wanted to note that these particular roads that you're, that we signed over, I think we signed the deeds last week, were from, not from the most recent round of, of improvements, but from the prior round before that, I think, three years ago. For some, whatever reason, they were never accepted by the city at that point. So as soon as the city is ready to accept the latest round, we'll be able to sign those over as well.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mr. Worthington. Seeing no one further, I will close public hearing. Any comments, Commissioners? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes. Ordinances in the first reading.
Ordinance for first reading, item number one, an ordinance to amend the salary ordinance.
Make motion?
Second motion.
We have motion in the second on ordinance in the first reading, item number one. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Ordinance for first reading, item number two, an ordinance authorizing the city of Millville to acquire property known as 24 East Oak Street.
Make motion?
Second.
We have motion in the second. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Ordinance for first reading, item number three, an ordinance approving an agreement of sale that would alterize the city of Millville to convey a deed of easement to the state of New Jersey.
Make motion?
Second motion.
We have motion in the second on ordinance for the first reading, item number three. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Ordinance for first reading, item number four, an ordinance amending Millville Code Chapter 30, Land Use and Development Regulations to rezone Block 290, Lot 1, to HC Highway Commercial District as recommended in the 2025 Land Use Element of the Master Plan.
Make motion?
Second motion.
We have motion in the second for ordinance in the first reading, item number four. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes. Resolutions, please.
Resolution item number one, resolution approving the city of Millville to sponsor Cut International Short Film Festival.
Make a motion?
Second motion.
And with that, I have certification of funds from Susan Quinones for $5,000 from the UEZ Second Gen Revolving Fund Account.
We have a motion in the second on resolution item number one. Any comments?
Yes, I'm, I'm glad to see everyone speak on behalf of it. It's a success for Millville. It regenerates UEZ money to Millville, which is very important. And I hope everyone supports it.
Exactly. I appreciate everyone from, from seeing Bill here to Eric, to the, sort of, the filmmaker himself explaining the, you know, your trials and how film is produced in today, in 2025. I would not believe it, but it's, it's amazing of all that the filmmakers do and how the Cut International Film Festival is viewed and perceived by the public here in the city of Millville. So I thank you for explaining your story, and I think after you spoke, I think everybody was on board, but...
Very interesting, yes. Thank you.
Let's see. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution item number two, resolution authorizing discharge of mortgage 308 East Main Street.
Make motion?
Second motion.
We have motion in the second on resolution item number two. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution item number three, resolution authorizing tax and utility adjustments.
Make motion?
Second motion.
Motion in the second on resolution item number three. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution item number four, resolution appointing zoning board of adjustment alternate one, Jared Carl.
Make a motion?
Second motion.
Motion in the second on resolution item number four. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution item number five, resolution awarding a professional services contract for conflict foreclosure attorney McManaman Scotland and Bowman LLC.
Make motion on resolution item number five. With that, I do have certification of availability of funds in the amount of $5,000, signed by our CFO, Susan Quinones.
Second motion.
We have motion in the second with certification of funds on resolution item number five. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution item number six, resolution appointing William Stadnik III as Municipal Emergency Management Coordinator, John Wetstein, Kevin Hall, and Lawrence Fawcett as Deputy Emergency Management Coordinators.
Make motion?
Second.
Motion in second on resolution item number six. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution item number seven, resolution authorizing the award of a state contract annual library software for the police department.
Make motion, and with that, I have certification of funds in the amount of $23,630, signed by our Chief Financial Officer, Susan Quinones.
Second motion.
We have motion in the second with certification of funds on resolution item number seven. Any comments?
Just keeping our, processing equipment and everything up to date of the PD.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution item number eight, resolution authorizing the city of Millville to apply for NJDEP. for NJD P Technical Design Assistance to supply the Laurel Lake community safe drinking water.
Make motion. Second motion.
We have motion in the second on resolution item number eight. Any comments?
Yeah, I want to thank Engineering Department. This was one of the grants that they were working on. Remington and Vernick is the engineering that their, our engineering department's going to be working with. It's for design assistance, as they have the contract with the state. It's for planning and design grant for Laurel Lake area. We should, we could be able to get up to $2 million per year for the design assistance, and it's 100% free to the city.
I also have a comment. When I came up with this idea about three years ago and started working with engineering and Mr. Mingle came in and got involved, we knew it was a good project there. I want to thank Mr. Watson for continuing that project. I'm ecstatic that it's on the agenda. As you can see, it took three years to get to this point from concept to getting the design started, and so projects take a long time, and I hope stuff like this continues.
Yeah, you're right. It is a good project, and I have a couple emails here from July 20th, 2023, where I brought it to your attention, so it's a good move.
As you, I'm, you know, smiling quizzically here because, you know, the way that government moves expectantly and quizz, and fastly and swiftly is never true. So thank you, Mr. Worthington, for your comments, and there's more truth with that that I'd like to talk to you later about. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Suie?
Yes.
Mayor Rominick?
Yes.
Resolution item number nine, resolution authorizing approval to submit a grant application and execute a grant contract upon reward with the NJDOT for the project entitled Ninth Street, Ninth Street Corridor Roadway Improvements.
Make motion. Second motion.
We have motion in the second on resolution item number nine. Any comments?
Yes. Again, this is one of the grants that the Engineering Department's been working on. The grant does have an expiration date, which is at the end of this month. We did have a meeting a little while ago with Commissioner Casabun. Wayne Gressman and Engineering Department want to thank them for, you know, putting us together.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Suie?
Yes.
Mayor Rominick?
Yes.
Resolution item number 10, resolution authorizing purchase of temporary utility and construction easements regarding the South 49 Bridge over the Morris River Superstructure Replacement.
Make motion. Second motion.
We have motion in the second, resolution item number 10. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Suie?
Yes.
Mayor Rominick?
Yes.
Resolution item number 11, resolution authorizing the city of Millville to enter into a memorandum of agreement, Council 18.
Make motion. Second motion.
Motion in the second on resolution item number 11. Any comments?
Yeah, I just want to thank Council 18 for the patience again and working with the city and thank those that represented the city.
Yes.
I agree.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, I just want everybody to realize that, you know, a lot of the stuff in this contract that was needed does come at a cost. Over the course of the five years, it's an increase of $1 million approximately, 947, that will be reflected in your tax bill unless we allow development to continue. So I hope everybody keeps that in mind as things move down the road, whoever sits up here next time. That's it.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Suie?
Yes.
Mayor Rominick?
Yes.
Resolution item number 12, resolution approving alcoholic beverage club license renewals for the 2025-2026 license year.
Make motion.
Second.
Motion in the second on resolution item number 12. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Suie?
Yes.
Mayor Rominick?
Yes.
Resolution item number 13, resolution approving alcoholic beverage license renewals for the 2025-2026 license year.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion in the second on resolution item number 13. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Suie?
Yes.
Mayor Rominick?
Yes.
Resolution item number 14, resolution to award a non-fair and open contract to Reliable Power Plus LLC.
Make motion on resolution item number 14. With that, I do have certification of availability in the funds in the amount of $25,750, signed by our CFO, Susan Quinones.
Second motion.
Motion in a second and certification of funds for that resolution item number 14. Any comments?
Yeah, this is for the, the main plant generator at the wastewater facility. We lose power down the Pals Road. It's our only source of supplying the plant with electric.
Very good.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Suie?
Yes.
Mayor Rominick?
Yes.
Your business, seeing none. We have now reached the public comment portion of our meeting. Anyone who would like to address the commission, please go to the podium, state your name and address your concerns. Please limit your comments to approximately five minutes. Thank you.
My name is Gary Meyer. I own Gem Enterprises on Columbia Avenue. I came here in 2013, bought a commercial property, and now I have almost three acres and a building that I was trying to sell to the city. And I am here to tell you that this government has been weaponized against me, absolutely weaponized. In selling my building, there were some people that were opposed to buying my building from the city. No problem. I get it. I appreciate that, you know, there's opposition. Not everybody has to agree. We have a sitting commissioner, Kirk Hewitt, who told another commissioner that I had a dishonorable discharge from the military. Now, if you want to give me my papers over there, I assure you I served. You could pull my records from the National Archives. Now, if you'll waive that that didn't happen, I won't play the recordings because it's embarrassing as hell to you what you did. There's my honorable discharge, right? So I'm also really upset because I do Veterans Affairs as a volunteer for disabled American veterans. I'm judge advocate. I'm on the state legislation committee for DAV. I'm judge advocate. I'm benefits officer for my chapter. I'm heavily involved in Veterans Affairs, and if I put this out on the internet, this would go nuts. The day before the vote for the other property, the fire inspectors came in, the same fire inspectors that I fix their 911 system for free. I volunteered to be a firefighter there, fixed laptops for them for free. I get a fire inspection the day before. Never had a fire inspection, no problem, right? If that was above board, but if it looks like a rat and smells like a rat, it's a rat. So I go and say, what's, what's the issue? Well, I tried to talk with Kirk Hewitt, and he said, oh, talk to, talk to Chief Lepincott. Okay, I talked to Chief Lepincott. He said, get a piece of paper when you got from zoning or something when you came in, business occupancy. And I got to tell you, Tim Shannon was great, and I dealt with Don Aries Economic Development. Guess what happened to my file? It's all missing. My files missing. Stuff I even have copies of stamped, it's missing. Someone threw away my files in this city. This is a warning to you all, depravations of rights. You don't even own your property because they can come after you here. It's weaponized. What happened to all my records on my building? I have nothing here. This is a building where I was offered 1.5 million. A lot of people don't know that. So I was trying to get 1.7 million from this city. It was all public, all public knowledge. So now I can't rent my building. I can't sell my building. I'm told to go to zoning, rezone it, rezone it, and I'm paying. Construction, do this. They still got my building all held up. I can't rent my building. I can't sell my building, and I'm a disabled vet. I'm really jacked up. If I like start showing you shit, I'm on chemical injections and everything else. My life isn't going to be as long as it should because of my service. I am furious. This is an absolute abuse of law under the color of law to weaponize government against their own people, and it happened here. It happened right here, and it's still happening. You need to resign, absolutely need to resign. And if you don't say that, you didn't say it, I'll play it. Everything you said is recorded. All the things that you say about the police, the police write for him. He says it, I got it recording. If you want, I'll have it on YouTube. I already have it uploaded. I just have it on listed right now. So everything you're doing with the police, the chief of police, according to you, is writing it. What the heck? You said it. I don't care what you say. It's on tape. Single party gets in, you're going to know the law. I'm going to school your ass. I'm telling you, I'm going to school you. You mess with the wrong guy. I tried playing ball. I tried getting my place. What kind of place is this to invest or live or have a business? What happened here can happen to any one of you. Now, I don't have a problem. Commissioner Watson wasn't against my problem. You've never done nothing to me, nothing at all. And whether you supported it, didn't support it, nothing. Ms. Casabun, I don't know you at all, never did anything to me. Mr. Suie, I do know you, no problems. You, you, you did support the building, but no thing. Mr. Rominick, I really don't know you, but you supported it. Kirk didn't support it. What is your motive? Because you don't like Suie? This is nonsense what happened. Then you have official misconduct where you say, don't worry, tear it up. You don't need to do anything. That's recorded, and I can play it right here. If you say you didn't do it, I'll hit play on here. I have snippets of all the bullshit you said.
Mr. Myers, please control your attitude.
It's, it's passionate because everything I worked for coming out of the military is to build my business 29 and a half years, and we have weaponization. This is some, I'm in Southeast Asia five months a year. This is some crap that would happen in Philippines or Laos, not Millville.
Please wrap it up.
I'll wrap it up, and how to wrap this up? You guys want to litigate this? And you absolutely slander, absolutely slander. But we have a federal thing, USC Title 18, deprivation of rights under the color of law. This FBI needs to come down and blow this place apart. This is corruption personified, and I can play you all the audio clips. Unbelievable what's happening here. I've supported this city. I've been on the radio and TV because I do different things for animals. I do things for veterans as a volunteer. This should never happen here, never happen here. You need to resign, absolutely. Step down, do yourself the favor, and as far as legal liability, you really need to step down. You already got lawsuits now.
Thank you.
Um, excuse me, uh, Greg Kears for NIP Strive, um, I guess first, just, we'll all take a breath for a second. Second, um, I just wanted to give a shout out, I saw Mayor Rominick walking in there on Saturday, but he forgot to mention he went. The ribbon cutting, because it's just a largely, largely unloved organization in this town.
Thank you, Greg.
Full disclosure, I used to be a for, a former board member, so I am a little, you know, I do enjoy it, but the Millville Historic Society unveiled the Whittaker Ice Wagon this weekend, which over twenty, almost twenty thousand dollars was raised by citizens in the town to preserve this piece of history. It's actually one of the ice wagons that would take the ice from around town that was cut on Union Lake for people when they still had the ice boxes. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for showing up for stuff like that, because it really does matter when elected officials show up and just highlight the good things that are happening in this town, because, you know, we all gotta breathe sometimes and good things help us breathe.
Thank you, Greg, and thank you for the remembrance, and I will allude more to that in closing comments, thank you, Greg.
Brian Griffiths, unrepresented taxpayer from Fourth Street, Millville. Is the elevator fixed?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, how about the fire hydrant on Fourth and Railroad?
Never was broken.
Is that fixed?
Never was broken.
Excuse me?
Sir, please ask all your questions and we'll answer them at closing comments of commissioners.
Okay, well, I was just trying to figure out where priorities were on, what, you know, what's important here. Any, uh, improvement going on for Wade Boulevard with the flooding?
We're working on it right now.
Any word on when the bridge is to be redone over, on Route forty-seven over Manico, when that construction is supposed to start? Is there anything, any legislation or ordinances against all the panhandling at the traffic lights on Route forty-nine and forty-seven? And also, as I'm questioning the legality and validity of being able to be certain violation for saying anything that the city is in violation of, which would be eleven eleven B. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith.
I'm just waiting for answers.
We will answer that at closing comments of commissioners once public comment portion is done.
John Worthington again. I'm here tonight to talk about lawsuits. Millville has had more than its share in recent years, but in most cases, the public is largely kept in the dark. Thousands of dollars are spent, million dollar settlements are risked, and in most cases, it's nearly totally opaque to the taxpayers. Eventually, some information comes out, usually buried in budgetary lines, usually well after the fact, but all too often, unless a citizen happens to find out about a suit and then makes the effort to publicize it themselves, the taxpayers are left in the dark. Aside from the direct cost, these suits also leave the city open to the possibility that unelected judges, instead of the residents and their representatives, will have the ultimate say in major development decisions affecting our town. Now, the city is being sued again by the developer who wants to build an asphalt and concrete recycling plant on attractive environmentally sensitive land that had been set aside for years in the master plan for conservation, the same developer against whom the taxpayers already paid to defend the suit in Superior Court last year. Now they're in federal court and they're making serious accusations. These accusations were the basis of the previous suit which the city won, not because the judge ruled the city was innocent, but because the developer had not yet expended other options to hold the city accountable. These are serious accusations and have the potential for serious and expensive consequences. The public has a right to be kept informed about them as they are happening, so we can understand both how our tax dollars are being used and what the people representing us are doing behind closed doors. I'm not going to go into the specifics tonight about the allegations, but I am asking that the city adopt a more taxpayer-centric posture towards lawsuits. It's the public's money, it's the public's business, and public business with all of its works, wins and loses, losses, needs to be conducted openly in the public view. Please be clear, I'm not expecting that the city discuss its legal arguments prior to going to court, but what I am asking is that when the city is sued, that a notice be made at the next public meeting that the city has been sued, and that a copy of the suit, which is public information, be posted to the city website, and more importantly, when the case is over, that the results be announced and the costs listed. That way, the public can see for themselves in real time where their tax dollars are going, and they can decide based on the facts whether they get, where they're getting the type of representation that they should expect from their elected officials. This new openness could even save, serve to save us money that is currently being spent responding to multiple Oprah requests for information on lawsuits. And because I'm not just here to complain without offering solutions, I'm willing to offer my experience and my time to work with the city staff in setting up such a system as a service to the city. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Worthington. Seeing no one else, that would close public comment portion of our agenda. Comments of commissioners, Commissioner Hewitt, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I got it, Gary? We talked many times before Mike left, chief, and I tried to do as much as I could for you, refining your records, we talked right on City Hall steps, uh, we talked a lot, I talked to you the day after I heard about the conversation that we just, that you just had with your discharge, did I not call you? I, I called you, we had a good, long talk.
Well, you admitted that you said I had.
Sir, it's, sir, Mr. Myers.
He said, he said.
Mr. Myers, Mr. Myers, it's his time to talk.
Yes, sir.
Kirk, just please answer the question as you may.
I do understand, uh, about the, uh, now you have had another inspection. As the commissioner, as any of us commissioners up here, we don't walk into our departments and tell them to stop. Now, I, I imagine that you do know, you have the right to take this to the Board of Appeals, you named some, some folks that you had talked to outside of the city, uh, I have a instant message here from Facebook from you, uh, that I saved just for in case this happened to come up, uh, in time, in the last eleven meetings, I have ten after tonight. And in, I'm not gonna read the IM out of respect to you, uh, but I will say that I did end the IM by requesting that any conversation, written or otherwise, uh, and conversation about inspections and such be Oprah'd and conversed with properly, and your final reply was to that was, I didn't think you would want anything Oprah'd. I'm not afraid of Oprah's. Am I correct?
If you ask him questions and you're inviting him to speak.
Okay, but, but that's how that went, uh, and as far as the last violations went, yes, please, you're back, you're, you're back home, apply to the Board of Appeals. I can't walk into a fire inspector and say, throw this away. Not just can tell our people to do that. That's all, that, that's all I have there. Mr. Griffiths, uh, I think there will be backup from the Commissioner of the Department, there was nothing wrong with the fire hydrant at Fourth and Railroad, the fire hydrant had water flow, uh, I'm not gonna say much more because there is legal things going on. I will end this with the Millville Fire Department and any departments on the scene never were out of water during that fire. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Hewitt. Commissioner Sui.
Let's see, where to start? First, I'm glad the Film Festival got approved. At the last meeting, there was a lot of talk about grants and how we should apply for more grants and the, people kinda made it sound like it was easy. You know, and I, I mentioned about, after you get the grants, all the stuff you did, you have to do to make sure that you stay in compliance. So, I pulled up a case where people weren't in compliance, and that was in a FEMA grant to downtownship, and the, uh, Office of Inspector General, Department of Homeland Security altered that grant, and it said they didn't always follow procurement standards, we recommend the FEMA Disalial eight hundred and thirty-two thousand of the two point five million in grant funds, township didn't have support for four hundred and forty-five thousand, questions, cost, blah, 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 anyway, you get the idea. So, if you don't follow through, and it's very, it's a lot of, it's technical, it's a lot of reports, so it's just not a matter of applying grants and getting them, you have to have that follow-through, and that does require someone that's very dedicated to do that. Um, I'll address the lawsuits. Since we've been in office this time, I believe we have settled two lawsuits, I think, I don't know about the police department for everything else, one was settled by the insurance company, which we did not have a say in, the other one was an employee lawsuit that occurred under the last commission. Since then, we haven't settled any, we did have one lawyer that proceeded with a lawsuit when he was instructed not to, which we lost, he sent us the bill and we got rid of the attorney and did not have to pay the bill. As for allegation that things aren't done in the open, I will tell you this, we meet with developers all the time, sometimes it's me and the administrator or something, it could be any of us, and people come to us with plans ranging from, I don't know, some absurd stuff like growing marijuana in a shed to putting an asphalt plant in, we listen to everybody, we have to listen to everybody. Now, when you have a seasoned developer making allegations that one guy made a backroom deal, first of all, he knows one guy can't make a backroom deal, and after this lawsuit's over, I'll explain the whole, the whole thing, I don't want litigation away, I mean, he lost once, I believe he's going to lose again. Everything we do gets voted on, whether it's a redevelopment agreement, a change to an ordinance, or something we sent before the planning, we vote on it. No one person can do that, the system is designed so that no one person could do it. If I could do it and I did it, that's if I could and if I did, I wouldn't be sitting here, I'd be on vacation somewhere, on a nice warm island somewhere. So, you know, the lawsuits have been pretty under control, we've been very fortunate, we can't stop people from suing, they can sue for anything they want to sue for. So, there's that. Now, the next thing I'm going to address, since Mr. By, I wasn't ever going to bring it up in public, but I am since Mr. Meyer brought it up. So, I had a conversation with Mr. Hewitt and he had told me that Mr. Meyer received a dishonorable discharge. I was pretty upset about that because I'd known Mr. Meyer for a long time, knew he was involved in Veterans Affairs and stuff like that, and being a vet myself, that upset me, I confronted him, I went right over there and I asked him, and he's like, dude, it's on the wall, you see it. And Mr. Hewitt called him up and had a conversation with him later. So, that doesn't make me happy, I wasn't going to make that public, but it's already public, you've already said it publicly tonight, he said it publicly, so that did happen, and that's unfortunate. You know, that, that really irritated me as an honorably discharged veteran myself. Other than that, um, you can see, you know, the time it took to get the planning phase done for the roads in Laurel Lake, so I'm going to address the water one more time with the roads, and then I'm not going to bring it up again. So, when we did Woodland Avenue, I don't know, I think that project got completed a couple, a couple of weeks ago, you can actually run a water line next to a road and mo, or bore under the road to connect it so that you don't have to disturb the blacktop, and that's what we should be doing in Laurel Lake so that we can pave the roads and provide the water, particularly since the, the, uh, money to do that is in place. And with that, progress.
Thank you, Commissioner Sui. Commissioner Kosabun.
All right, Mr. Griffiths, to address your issue about the Wade Boulevard, we are currently working on that, that is one of the projects that my department is taking over and looking into, and we are going to repair it. Thank you, Mr. Worthington, for your kind words, um, and willingness to meet and form some kind of a group. Also, I want to say congratulations to the upcoming graduates that are graduating from high school shortly, in the next few days. Congratulations to Michelle in engineering for getting her diploma or her degree, or her certificate or license. I look forward, uh, for the Film Festival, it sounds very interesting. And last but not least, um, remind, just a reminder, remember, a smile is a very powerful thing. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kosabun. Vice Mayor Watson.
Yeah, I got the opportunity to speak with engineering, um, about Laurel Lake and kinda seeing like where we were gonna end up after we, you know, try to get these grants through, you know, there's a grant that we applied for that had forty-seven hundred square feet, you know, it's a, or linear feet, I'm sorry, um, it was such a pretty, pretty big project, you know, to apply for that grant and the deadline coming in June, I mean, obviously that kinda took priority, we had to get more funding and secure it. But for Laurel Lake, the asphalting project, um, kinda go over it with them, like, hey, you know, what's our options, if we can hire an engineer consultant, um, basically I was told it was, you know, we're, we're kinda restricted if we go that way, obviously we're using funds for the engineering costs, you know, to complete the project, but also it's whatever the engineering does, so it could be like the width of the road or the, you know, depth of the asphalt that they're putting down. Performing the work in-house, uh, we can make the roads, you know, the way we want them, maybe wider, maybe thicker, um, and also use that money for actual asphalt that's getting put down on the road and not for engineering costs. There's also some more work that needs to be done, um, drainage still needs to be worked on, um, and they're also pushing back the roads, um, and that's, we're also doing that in-house, so thank you to Streets and Roads for doing that for some Laurel Lake. So, as soon as we get done with a couple of things off our list, we're gonna proceed with Laurel Lake project. With what transpired in this meeting, I didn't know if I was gonna bring it up or not, um, but it means a lot to me to bring it up. My grandmom Vera Watson, she passed away on, uh, Friday, June sixth, um, the reason why I'm bringing her up and how she's associated with the city is my grandmom served for the city of Millville for thirty-five years, um, she retired in two thousand and ten, uh, she worked for the police department and dispatch and records, um, so part of this commission, I just wanted to tell her thank you for the years that she served, and, uh, as her grandson, just wanted to tell her I loved her. But, that's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Watson, thank you for sharing your personal, and, uh, God bless your grandmother.
Thank you for allowing me to bring it up.
Film Festival, Bill, continue doing a great job, I know you would do a great job for the Arc C Film Festival, I look forward to attending it as I have in the past. Mr. Kears, thank you for reminding me of an event that I missed, when I looked through my calendars of events, what events did I go to? Yes, on Flag Day, on the Army's two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday, June fourteenth, the Wood Family Mansion on Columbia Avenue celebrated Flag Day, and by so being there, immediately the first thing you, when you came to the Wood Family Mansion, they handed you American flag, and that's what we know America of, our flag of the United States of America. But, to have the Whittaker Ice Box there, to learn of all the history, not just of ice, but of the history of ice cream in the city of Millville, I'm only thirty years old, the history that has predeceased me is knowledgeable and exceptional in the city of Millville, and I implore each and every one of you to go to the Millville Historical Society when they're open, and go there and ask about ice cream. It was over a year that, in the talks with Linda and I, um, at the Wood D. Family Mansion, over a year they put into the research and printing all the tablets and photos and making them high resolution, for you to see and read and understand all the great things that Millville had in its past. And I was met with remorse in saying that Millville's past is the greatest thing that ever happened, and I implored them that we are working to make Millville a better and brighter future, all of Millville, all of the forty-some square miles, whether it's forty-two that the county says we have or the forty-four that I like to say we have. We're here to make a positive difference and to see the history that the Millville Historical Society did provide to us on Flag Day, and to continue that history here in Millville, um, I just appreciate what the Millville Historical Society system does, and you cannot go there with an open mind because you'll be there all day or all four hours when they are open. Go there with a topic, go there with something to see, if you want to see a yearbook from nineteen fifty-six or nineteen forty-four, you can see a yearbook from Millville Senior High School. With that, I do congratulate the upcoming graduates of the class of twenty twenty-five, I did see the great group picture that Mr. Labor did take for the graduating seniors, and graduation will be held on the twenty-third of June. Mr. Griffiths, you had a violation to cut your grass, you cut your grass and your violation has been abated. On South forty-seven, the bridge discussion will be happening soon. Cheerfulness is the best promoter of health and is a, and is as friendly to the mind as to the body, Joseph Addison. I wish each and every one of you a great night, I wish all of you a wonderful weekend, and I hope to see you all here on June first as we start brand-new month and welcome our nation's July.
July.
Thank you, July first, as we welcome our nation's birthday. Motion for adjournment, please.
Submove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.